Good evening and welcome to the one meeting of December of the ISD 191 Burnsville Egan Savage School Board. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. The date is December 10th, 2020, and the time is 6:30 PM. I'd like to welcome folks who are joining us. We have a full evening tonight. We'll be saying our fond farewells to a couple of our retiring board members, and then conclude the evening with a discussion on FY '22 budget. So, full evening for sure. Director Schatz, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start by approving tonight's agenda. I will take a motion.
I'm moved.
Moved by Director Schatz, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Discussion or questions? Seeing none, Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Alt.
I.
Chester.
I.
Courier.
I.
Hugh.
I.
Miller.
I.
Schatz.
I.
And the motion carries. Thank you. We're starting our evening off with our annual truth and taxation hearing. The, we will now open the truth and taxation hearing portion of the board meeting. The purpose of the truth and taxation hearing is to present the following information: the current year budget and actual revenue and expenses for the prior year, the proposed property tax levy, the percentage of change over the prior year, specific purposes and reasons for which taxes are being increased, and to allow for public comments. Public comments will be heard after the budget and property tax presentation. We will be following the procedures outlined in Board Policy 207 Public Hearings. Anyone wishing to address the board must have signed up prior to the evening, and I am told that no one has signed up to speak this evening. So, we will now turn to Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services, who will begin the budget and property tax presentation. Welcome, Lisa.
Good evening, and thank you Chair Alt, Board Members Superintendent Battle, and our community who are viewing our truth and taxation presentation provided annually. As we begin this presentation, much of what you just heard in the opening comments is what we will be covering if you'll turn to the next slide, please. For the evening, we have an agenda that is inclusive of all of the required presentation items. State law does define what it is that is necessary to be completed in the presentation of a truth and taxation hearing. Next slide tells us about the agenda and what we will be covering in detail as we move forward for the evening. As we turn to the next slide, school funding is highly regulated by the state, and there's really just the last item listed on this slide that is in the authority of the school board to submit referendums for operating and capital needs to our voters for approval. Otherwise, you'll note that the first top three statements there indicate items that are formulas and tax policies and laws that are written by the state. And so, it limits the amount of movement that there is actually when it comes to the levy, but we will be covering some of those differences tonight as we talk further about this. Our next slide does discuss a graph that we see on an annual basis, and we like to keep track of this. As this slide tells us and helps us understand the gap that currently exists between the dotted line, which you see is the general education formula allowance since 2003, and the solid line that is above that in red on your slide, that reflects what the amount would have been had inflation per the Consumer Price Index been applied all along. As you can see, we still have a gap in 2021 that is around $639. With that in mind, that makes sometimes the budgeting process a bit difficult as our general education formula that is used to fund most of our expenditures just doesn't necessarily keep up with the rate of inflation. As we take a look into the next slide, we're going to begin our process this evening of reviewing our prior year audited revenues and expenditures. This is one of the required items in the truth and taxation presentation. And as you see on this screen here, this is a summary of our general fund. You will note that it has an audited balance beginning column, and the ending column is also an audited balance. These are of our fund balances. We have the columns for audited revenues and audited expenditures showing. As you can see by the slide, our revenues were within a half of a percent of the budget when we have our audited actuals compared to the budget. While our expenditures, there is a bit more of a variance at 4%. Our actual expenditures coming in less than the budgeted amount with two main factors, as has been discussed with the board when this was presented in November. Those factors were, one, being a more conservative approach to our first-year budgeting process on a new finance software. And secondly, the impact of essentially shuttering our school buildings as a result of responding to the pandemic in the spring. That did not necessarily allow for many of the expenditures or operations, events, and activities that would have taken place in the spring to actually take place. So, as we take a look at this particular slide, the top line is the unassigned A, and you see that there is, if you do the numbers, you'll find that the difference between the beginning and the ending fund balance, similar to the line item that is labeled D for restricted, those are the two areas of our fund balance that increased each around $2.4 million, and that is the increase to the fund balance overall, leaving us with a total fund balance of $20,326,027 up from the $15,379.15 previously. When you do the calculation of what percentage is the unassigned fund balance, it is just over 8%, 8% being that which is board policy. As we turn to the next slide, we are now focusing on our food service, community education, capital projects, and debt service funds. And these, again, are the audited figures from the fiscal year 20, school year. Food service did see a slight increase in their fund balance. You'll see that the similar situation where the revenue is being pretty close, yet our expenditures were a little bit more of a difference there between budget and actual. And largely, that's due to the last part of the school year being completely changed as to how we functioned and utilizing a different mode of service for our families across the community under what we call the summer food service program. Quite a few less meals were served as compared to what we normally would do, and that is a result of three months of students not being in the classrooms last year. For community education, you see there is an increase to the fund balance there of $712,000, of which that is a result of programming and staffing adjustments that were made at the beginning of the fiscal year. And coming into the period of March, they were running at that type of an increase in their fund balance at the time prior to the pandemic hitting. So, as we then moved into the last three months, and then we shifted completely to essentially stopping many of our programs through our community education program, we did continue to have childcare provided. And so, that was able, with the help of the federal funds that we have received as well as outside resources that has been able to maintain as a break even. The capital projects and the debt service, they were slightly different, and we'll talk a little bit about those changes in those particular projects. Mostly, it's timing of payments of revenues and expenditures. As we move to the next slide, we are now moving into our internal service funds. We track these separately because this is where we hold our self-insured health, dental, and severance or other post-employment benefits programs. These funds are, did in total, increase slightly over the year. And as you can see, they are each holding their own. Just a comment about the dental self-insurance. As you know, many services in the past six months have not really been available to many, many members of our community as dental services were significantly reduced. And so, we just didn't have the claims that we normally would see in a given year. So, that's the main reason for that increase in that particular fund balance. Otherwise, the health insurance managed very similar to what has been in the past, considering the fact that the pandemic did increase some costs, but there were also other costs that were decreased. So, it just kind of washed each other out, you might say, those impacts. As we take a look at the trust funds, we do have a custodial fund at the end of the fiscal year. We've always had this custodial fund, but now because of Gatsby 84, this has changed as to how we report that. So, this particular custodial fund is our scholarship fund, and it remains at $64,072. Moving to the next slide, we are going to move to a different portion of our presentation. This is now talking about our current year. Our current year is at a stage in which only the adopted budget has been approved by the board. A revised budget has not yet been approved. We are in the process of working on that revised budget for purposes of presenting that to the board in January. So, we will review briefly the slides that were shared back in June regarding our adopted budget for fiscal year 21. As we take a look at our revenues for the general fund alone, you will see that 71% is in state aid. That's the general state aid you see down below at 57%, the green, as well as the purple 14% that you see for state categorical aid. Combined, that's 71% of our revenue, while 23% of our revenue comes from property taxes in the current year. And sorry, federal aid at the time of the adopted budget was only 3%. That will change with the inclusion now in the revised budget for our CRF and CARES funding. And then our other local revenue for adopted budget is at 3% as well. The next slide talks about our general fund expenditures for the current year 2020, 2021 adopted budget. This particular slide, if you were to take into consideration the instruction, it's the blue, which is the majority of that pie chart, 64% plus the amount that is shown as instructional pupil support of 12% that's in the purple. Those two combined are 76% of our expenditure budget for the general fund for the current year. Next in line, percentage-wise, is our operations and maintenance at 7% of the funds, or 8. almost $8 million. Third in line is our transportation at 6%. And then, fourth would be a tie basically between that district support services and administration. If we take a look at our expenditures on the next slide a little differently, it's the same expenditures for the general fund. Only this time, we're taking a look at it from a different lens. How much of our budget is being spent on salaries, wages, and benefits? And if you add the 58 and the 22% you see in the orange and the blue, that totals 80%. 80% of the budget expenditure budget for the general fund is in salary, wages, and benefits. Next in line is our purchase services at 14%. Keep in mind, our school district does contract for transportation and substitutes. Having said or noted those points, we basically have about 6% of the expenditure budget remaining for other expenditures, capital expenditures, and supplies. Turning to our next slide, we're going to move to another section of the presentation. This one is now around the payable 2021 levy. There is a timeline that is followed on an annual basis. It begins in September. This year, that was September 8th, when MDE, Minnesota Department of Education, they give us a draft of what our levy limitation looks like. In September, around the 24th for this year, our school board approved the proposed levy amounts. And in November is when property tax statements are sent out from the counties to our community members. Tonight, December 10th, we're holding our public hearing on the proposed levy at a regularly scheduled meeting. And following this hearing this evening, our school board will certify final levy amounts. Our next slide shows a comparison of our levy for payable 2020 versus the payable 2021 certified levies. And it's broken down by four main categories. Our general, community service, general debt service, and OPEB trust service. OPEB, recall, is other post-employment benefits. In these columns, you see the comparison of basically the same levy from a year ago compared to this levy that is before the board this evening. Our total decrease in comparing these is 0.3 of 1%. So, essentially, the same as what we had last year, a little bit less. We're going to talk about some of those differences of the various different line items because although it's only a 0.3 of 1% decrease, there are some swings between the various different categories that we want to review those increases and decreases. So, the next slide talks about a line item summary of our general levy, the general fund. Again, you see the total dollars listed for each of those levy years with an increase-decrease column on the far right. The purple lightly shaded rows that you see are somewhat grouped together, and they basically all come together as part of our referendum calculation. So, as you, as we talk about this in a few more slides down the road here, we will see why it is that this number shows significant negative amounts there. Additionally, you see there is a line that is highlighted in light blue. Those are long-term facilities maintenance levy, and we'll talk about that one as well. Any of these lines that have an amount that's around $100,000 adjustment, we'll discuss. As we move to the next slide, we're going to show you then the community service fund. Here, you will see that in total, there is a slight adjustment for the entire, the entire fund levy difference of $168,303. We'll discuss those adjustments too as we move into future slides. The next slide shows you the summary of our general debt service as well as, at the bottom, the other post-employment benefit or OPEB levy. So, as we move from the summary slides that we've been looking at, let's talk specifically about the reasons for increases and decreases. And the next slide talks about our general fund levy decreases. As we take a look at the referendum, location optional, and equity revenue levy, those are the line items that were grouped together in a light purple. This reflects a significant decrease of almost $1 million that is largely due to a change in enrollment estimates. And so, with a declining enrollment that then is different from what may have been estimated at the time two years prior, you see then adjustments being made that adjust for the fact that we may have over-levered previously for the actual enrollment. And so, therefore, you see a negative adjustment in future years, and that's what we're experiencing here. On the long-term facilities maintenance levy, this reflects a $96,195 adjustment in total, or a decrease, I should say. And that's pretty much just due to the projects that we have approved and the fact that we're just that much less than the previous year's projects that were approved. So, given that, we try to keep that fairly close, but it did shift a little bit. Some of that might be due to projections of what it's going to cost for a project, and then in the end, those prices might come in a little less or different. As we move to the next slide, you will see that we're still in the general fund discussion, and we're talking now about the reemployment line item, reemployment insurance levy. This has increased due to an estimate that has been made for fiscal year 2022. It is assumed that we will require additional funds for reemployment insurance, and therefore, that estimate has increased by $175,000. Our lease levy is decreased by almost the same amount, but the other direction here, $179,024 due to a final payment on one of our remaining leases. So, we only have a half a year left on one of the leases. The capital projects referendum levy, as you may recall, this is our tech levy. This has increased by $302,577 due to the fact that our set rate that has not changed is applied to a change in valuation. And with an increase in property valuation, then that dollar a month does increase. As we move to the next slide, we are still in the general fund levy. And now, we're talking about a fiscal year 19 final adjustment for, that's reflecting lower finalized enrollment, and a fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21 adjustments that are based on updated enrollments per levy formula. So, on every assumption that is made in the levy process, there's a follow-up for actuals compared to those estimates. And each year, it tries to keep up with those adjustment changes and making sure that it's truing things up for our taxpayers so that in the end, the taxpayers are only paying for those that are actual costs incurred or actual students that we serve. As we move to the next slide, we're now moving into a different fund, which is the community service fund. Under this particular levy, this category of levy, we had an adjustment for school age care levy. In payable 2020, it was increased because we had experienced an amount that was significantly more than what we had originally estimated and planned for in a prior year. So, as it was adjusted two years, or last year for that, it was increased by $265,000. However, for the payable 2021, that adjustment is only $79,571 compared to that which we estimated. So, the reason for a decrease is simply because of that truing up calculation that is done, and it's a lesser amount than it was last year. As we take a look at the next slide, this is now the general debt service fund levy. Okay, so as we talk about debt service, every year, we're allowed to levy 105% of the principal and interest payments that we have for our debt. Over time, that can accumulate, and we don't want to be short on funds available to pay the debt principal and interest payments. And that's why they're allowed to levy for a little bit more. But when there is not a concern of taxpayers paying their taxes and such, and we're receiving the full amount, and we're making payment for something that's only at 100%, not 105%, you end up with an excess amount over a period of time. So, last year, an amount between the debt service funds accumulated to almost $935,000 was basically taken back for our taxpayers, and our, the actual cash we received was less for the debt excess amount, which basically kind of clears things out a little bit, right? Well, when you compare it then to this year where we don't have that debt excess negative adjustment applied against the amount that we need for the principal and interest payments, now it looks as though there's an increase. The payments have not increased. The payments are very much according to schedule. They are the same, but without the negative adjustment for the debt excess that was seen in the prior year, it appears as though it's an increase for this year. So, as we, I do want to make note also, though, that in November, because we sold bonds for 2020A issue, it refunded our 2011A debt. And that was a refunding process intended to save about $250,000 on an annual basis for the remaining portion of that debt. And so, that is reflected in your current levy before you tonight. That does show a savings already in this first year for our taxpayers related to that refunding. Our next slide is around the other post-employment debt service fund. Similar to the conversation I just held about our, our general debt and that excess, we had a similar situation where in prior year, it was $115,722 of debt excess and negative adjustment. That just doesn't exist in this particular year of payable 2021. So, therefore, it appears as though there's an increase when actually, it's just because there's not that negative adjustment. All right, we have now concluded the summary of all the various increases and decreases across all of our funds for the levy of 2021 compared to payable 2020 levy. We're now going to move into, what does this mean for our taxpayers at home? So, if we move to the next slide, this slide is very filled with numbers. I encourage you to be able to zoom in if you like, or as we move forward, you'll see there are four slides that will help you to see this more visually. Essentially, what we try to do is we take a look at the last three years, and we are comparing the impact of the tax levy on various values of homes, commercial and industry, apartments and residence non-homestead, and seasonal recreational residential properties. These calculations are showing essentially the impact on our taxes. We're focusing on that within the city of Burnsville. We serve many communities. So, this particular slide is focusing on what does that look like for our Burnsville community. And as we take a look at the next slide, you will find that there's a few things that are covered in this. In all of this data, it is based on a 16.5% cumulative change in property value that is assumed from 2018 to 2021 taxes. And for all of the following four examples that we cover, there is an increase of valuation of market value that is assumed from 28 to 2019. It was 5.4%. It was 5.5% assumed 2019 to 2020, and 4.7% from 2020 to 2021. All of these charts and estimates have been provided by Ellers, who serves as our district's municipal financial advisor. As we take a look at the next slide, it's the same information we just saw on the slide with all the numbers. Only here, it's more visual. And what we're doing on this particular slide is we're honing in on the $250,000 value residential homestead property and showing in a graphical form how the last three years compared to the estimate for the 2021 levy. In example two, that comparison is for a $350,000 residential homestead property. All of the previous assumptions apply to these particular graphs. Our next slide is intended to show the same information, only now it's discussing our apartments and property and our commercial industrial property. So, for $750,000 value apartment and property, you can see the comparison of the three past years to the estimate for the 2021 levy and how that impact is, as well as that for a $2 million valued commercial industrial property. Again, the percentage increases assumed for the past years are the same as what had been previously discussed two slides previous. As we move to the next slide, we have concluded our review of what it is that the comparison of our various years of property taxes are for each homeowner and their valuations. But we do want to take a moment and speak to our resident taxpayers who may be on a fixed income. And as they may see increases to their property taxes, as every homeowner has a very different picture that is shown for themselves based upon their own homes valuation and what that looks like is something that is very difficult for me to speak to on an individual basis. But as you look at your homeowner, your property tax statement that you received as a homeowner, and if you find that there are significant increases to your property taxes, we encourage you to inquire of a tax professional regarding your eligibility for property tax refunds that do exist. Next slide discusses our next board action later this evening. In this meeting is an agenda action item requesting our Board of Education to certify the final levy for the payable 2021 year, which will fund our school year for 2021, 2022. And the next slide shows that this concludes the presentation of our truth and taxation truth and taxation presentation for our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. This concludes the truth and taxation hearing as no one had signed up to speak before our meeting began. Now we will turn to the information portion of our meeting. I'd like to invite Amina Aftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, to join us. We will be receiving a report on the combined world's best workforce and achievement and integration reports. Welcome, Amina.
Thank you, Cheryl, members of the board, Superintendent Battle. I appreciate having the opportunity to share with you the 2019-20 Combined World's Best Workforce and Achievement Integration Progress Report. Next slide, please. This annual report is required by the Minnesota Department of Education and serves as an excellent means to reflect on the academic progress in 191. This report combines the progress of two programs, the World's Best Workforce, five key areas that demonstrate the path of successful Minnesota student from kindergarten readiness to graduation, and the Achievement and Integration Program, which is intent on pursuing racial and economic integration, increase student achievement, create equitable educational opportunities, and reduce academic disparities. In some instances, the goals of the two programs intersect, and in others, the goal addresses separate elements unique to their purposes. Next slide. These are the five Minnesota state goal areas for all school districts known as the world's best workforce. Each year, the ISD ISD 191 sets measurable goals in each of these five areas. Slide. Beginning with our youngest learners, incoming kindergarteners are assessed for their readiness for kindergarten in many domains, including early literacy, numeracy, social skills, communication, self-regulation, and creative thinking. For the world's best workforce and the achievement integration, only one of these many domains is used. It is the pre-reading literacy literacy skill of letter naming. Knowing that students are much more than this single assessment, this one data point does give teachers a clear focus to support students in this critical pre-reading skill. For the world's best workforce, in the fall of 2019, forty-nine point eight percent of students were able to meet the fall benchmark for school readiness. And the goal was fifty-one percent was set for this fall. The results of only forty-one percent being able to meet benchmark shows a significant decline, and it may reflect the detrimental impact of COVID-19 pandemic on preschools, preschool attendance and programming. With the mandatory closures last spring of of schools, pre-K programs, distance learning was one option for many parents. Because so much of pre-K learning occurs in other settings, the pandemic had impacted summer programming, including our own targeted services, summer school, libraries and community centers, and teachers are welcoming many kindergarteners in need of an additional boost. This fall, the needs of these and future kindergarteners in the pandemic are being met in multiple ways. In the hybrid, we use very small pods of ten to twelve students in classrooms. Not only does this meet the safety protocols, but it does allow those teachers to provide very personalized instruction. We also are working now that we're moving to distance learning to targeted intervention for K and one students this month. For any student that was not meeting the benchmark, and the services will be provided by our elementary learning specialist throughout the month of December. It's an extra boost of daily instruction and practice on foundational skills. Also, the integration of the VPK at each elementary site has created a better partnership for support for students and the alignment for pre-K and K. I can talk more about that. However, it will be the focus of our SPA presentation in January, and Cindy Check will be able to share just some great information about how we're supporting our pre-K and our kindergartners. Even with the overall learning loss, next slide, the A and I goals asked us to dig deeper into the groups that often show disparities in achievement. While no group actually met their final goal, it was encouraging to see our students of color and students eligible for free and reduced meals show increases. Because of the low numbers in American Indian kindergarten group, they essentially showed no change, no growth or no loss. But kindergarteners in the Latino group really did demonstrate a step backward. However, the other students, we felt as though overall our children, our BIPOC children really did make some progress, and we were pleased to see that. Slide. The next goal for World's Best Workforce and Achievement Integration is all students reaching reading proficiency by grade three. The data point that we had been working with was based on the Minnesota comprehension comprehensive assessments, the MCAs, which unfortunately were not administered this spring during the pandemic. And because, next slide, and because of the closures this spring, we did not administer our own local spring assessments, fast bridge assessments for the achievement in integration data point either. And so we really were unable to report the results for either of the benchmarks for grade three. Slide. The same circumstances apply to the world's best workforce goal, reducing the achievement gap. This goal was dependent on the MCAs as well as the college and career readiness goals relying on the ACT data. Slide. One ninety-one students in grade eleven were not given the chance to take the ACT in the spring. Instead, those students were offered that opportunity as twelfth graders this fall, and so they took that assessment in October, and so were able to get their ACT scores done this fall. Slide. The ACT data for achievement and integration for college and career readiness focused on our avid students, again, unable to report because our students did not take the spring ACT. Slide. What can we talk about? What data do we have? Along with our kindergarten readiness, we're going to bookend that with our graduation data. Because graduation data is reported one year behind, we are looking at the graduation rates for the class of 2019 pre-COVID. The overall graduation rate for Burnsville High School did not reach its goal of ninety percent. However, there were some areas to celebrate. We did see an overall increase from eighty-five percent to almost eighty-seven percent, which brings the the trend in a steady direction at at BOSS and an optimist or BHS, an optimistic rise at the high school. Slide. So when you look at the two numbers, you see that BOSS seemed to be pretty straightforward across the board, which is to be expected based on their purpose and the students that they serve for their four-year graduation rate. Slide. Achievement integration digs deeper into this goal and asks us to address the disparities in some of the students' groups. This showed us some mixed results. We saw some strong results positively for 191 Black students who exceeded the achievement integration goal the previous year, and they continued to exceed the the goal set for this for that year at eighty-three percent for the four-year graduation rate. So the original achievement integration plan had the goal set at at seventy-seven percent, I believe. And they exceeded that target in the prior year of 2018 and continued to exceed that target with an eighty-three percent graduation rate. So really some nice, nice progress there. The Latinx students showed a strong growth, even if it fell short of their goal by one percent. And so seeing that growth with our Latino students was really powerful, moving from sixty-four percent to seventy-one percent. And I thought that was some really positive growth on that part, on their part. Again, with the small numbers, our native students remain somewhat steady, and we continue to work very closely with our Indian education program in order to support our high school students to graduate within the four years. When looking at the four-year graduation rates for all groups, we are beginning to see that upward trend, except for students, slide, except for students receiving English language services. We saw the upward trend. You can see in the graphs, the upward trend for almost every single group. For some, it was very small. But the students who are receiving English language services continued to dip and fall for the twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, or nineteen, eighteen, nineteen school year for graduation. This group continues to be a group for intervention and support and really looking at the resources that we're providing for our students in high school to support them academically. Slide. Oh, sorry, go back. There is a bigger story beyond our four-year graduation rates, as you can see them in the line graphs. However, BOSS remains steady with its forty-nine percent. So that's half of their students graduating on time with the four-year graduation rate. There are many students who continue at BOSS. So when you look at that percentage, you're looking at another thirty-five percent of their students continue on. And considering that those students enter, for the most part, enter BOSS credit deficient or behind in some way, that having thirty-five percent of them continue on for another year and graduating in the fifth year and some even in the sixth year. So knowing that that continuation rate, so when you put the the two percentages together, you come up with a very high percentage in the in the eighties or in the, you know, the high eighties of students who are graduating from BOSS and continuing on, even if it's not under that four-year graduation rate. Also, the nuance of the story of looking at Burnsville High School, they had the eighty-seven percent graduation rate at for the four-year rate, and then nine percent continuing on. And those would be students that would be not all of them, but some of them necessarily moving on into our BOSS program and seeing that five-year graduation for them. So really looking at the high numbers that we're using to serve our student graduation. And I thought these were some really strong numbers and positive. We will have to look at our numbers for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the class of 2020, who graduated after the school closures for during the pandemic, and see what impact the pandemic might have had on our graduation numbers. Those numbers are due out, are reported by the state in February, end of February, and so we'll be sharing that information with you in a SPA report in March. Slide. With that, I know it's a mixed bag of saying, you know, we didn't collect data for some of our key progress reports, data points. But there are, you know, when we look at the front end of kindergarten readiness and we look at the other side of graduation, we can see that there are some, there are some mixed results, but some really positive gains for some of our students, especially some of our students of color. Areas to continue to target will be the support for our students of color as well as our English language. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amina. Board members, comments or questions? Oh, Director Schatz, I'm sorry.
That's good. Yeah, I'm just trying to find the hand raised piece. Thank you, Amina. I know it's a it's an odd year. I'll just just go that with the testing results and, you know, things like that, you know, but wow, you cannot end on better news than the graduation rates and the gains that we've made there. So that is excellent news. I'm looking forward to seeing those continue. Do you, I mean, it's, I'm hoping that the this year that, you know, the staff has been doing such a great job of working with the students, you know, that are in the midst of very uncertain circumstances and very difficult circumstances. But I know that they're doing everything they can to help the kids graduate this coming year with, you know, full, full credits and movement towards graduation. So I hope we'll see those those numbers continue to rise. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Schatz. Any other comments or questions? Well, I will echo Director Schatz's comments. It is just so wonderful after several years on the board to see this kind of growth in our graduation rates across the board. Of course, there are areas that where we still need to continue our work. But really, just so great to see the investment that we that we're making in time in our students really is coming coming to fruition. And again, you know, we'll just have to wait and see with this year where we land. We're all doing the best we can. So thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Brian Gershich. We will receive a report about 2022 through 2024 school calendars. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you, Cheryl, and Superintendent Battle and members of the board for this opportunity to present to you the school calendars for the 2022 through 2024 school years. Cheryl, can I just get a thumbs up to confirm that the screen has the presentation on it? Perfect. Thank you very much. What I will do is kind of just run through the outline here. We'll talk about our calendar parameters. And when I say parameters, those are the must-dos within our calendar. Those I we could, we could point to that in policy or in law or within our collective bargaining agreements, that these are some of the rules that we have to adhere to as we develop our school calendars. And then we have our preferences, which is really based on past practice, as well as the things that we like to do for our families. And we'll talk through those. Give you a little bit of background as to what went into the process of developing these calendars, and then share with you the draft and presented calendars for 2022, 23, and the 2023 As I enter into it, I just wanted to make note that by district policy, calendars do need to be approved by the board or brought forward to the board by November of the subsequent year. Past practice has been that these calendars come forward well in advance of that. Naturally, then the subsequent year would be the twenty twenty, I'm sorry, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, which we already have approved. So these are well passed. And again, practice of the district has been to have these calendars available for our staff and for our families multiple years at a time and in advance. So these are some of the calendar parameters that we have. You'll note the number of school days is written in policy, the number of teacher workdays that we have, both for our returning teachers, as well as those additional days that we have for our new teachers as a part of their professional development. We're required to have five non-student days professional development and prep. And you'll know one of those must be at the end of first semester. And then you'll see one day for each of our conference dates, one in the fall and one in the spring as a part of our parameters. and one in the spring as a part of our parameters. We also have four workshop days prior to the first day of school. Again, those are our teacher workshop days, one end-of-year professional day, that's after the final student day, and at that end-of-year grading and closeout kind of things. By Minnesota law, we do have to start after Labor Day. Certainly, there are exceptions in the state of Minnesota, like if there's a significant construction project, districts can ask, but those are very rare that people do. So otherwise, by law, we do have to start those after Labor Day. And then we do have conference days in both the fall and in the spring. By Policy 602, you'll notice number of the student days that are expected to be non-student days. Those would include Labor Day. We have two days in October that coincide with the Education Minnesota or our annual Teachers Convention, Thanksgiving, Thursday and Friday, Martin Luther King Junior Day, Memorial Day, and then we have in policy, that's a winter break of seven days excluding the weekends as non-student days as well. When we look at our preferences, certainly for our teachers, and thinking about this as a former secondary teacher, you like to keep as much balance in those semesters as you can. And if you're going to make one longer, you tend to do that in the second semester because of instructional days that are lost for the annual standardized testing like the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment. We like to do our non-student days as K-12, as opposed to breaking those out in elementary and secondary, certainly a much more family-friendly model by which to do that. We have worked to avoid having student days on general election days. Our buildings and sites are used as polling stations, and as we can, we try to avoid having those conflicts within our buildings. And then we have worked over the subsequent years, I'm sorry, the past years, to have our final student day be on a Thursday, which permits graduation on a Friday. Certainly, a number of things that go along with graduation, like the post-graduation celebrations and parties, that have a lot of parent volunteers as a part of that, which makes it helpful for them to be able to have that on a Friday. When we look at that development process, there certainly is quite a bit that goes into that from a process perspective to get a lot of perspectives, certainly with the superintendent's executive leadership team, as well as our student, Systems Improvement Student Achievement, our CISA directors team, drafting multiple drafts with our BEA president, that's our teachers' union. A lot of thanks to Wendy Drugi. She was a great partner in this process in helping develop the calendars, both conceptually as well as the physical drafting and counting of days and those kinds of things. So again, a great partner and a lot of feedback through that loop. We did share it with our bargaining units in multiple drafts and gave each lead of our units an opportunity to give feedback, as well as with our cultural liaisons, to really make sure that we're continuing to run it through as many different perspectives as possible, to make sure we're working on a culturally proficient school calendar as well. And certainly shared with our principal leadership to make sure that we understood the potential impact that they would see as well. Adjustments were made all the way through, and that's just my way of making sure that I cover the fact that the feedback wasn't superficial. We took that feedback, and there are large and small adjustments to this calendar based on what we were hearing from those various groups. And so what I'd like to do is present to you the draft of the two calendars, just highlighting some of the highlights within there. Again, these are kind of annual things within our calendars, so it's not like there's a lot of surprises within this. But the fall conferences, this is for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, would be November three, four, and seven, creating a professional day on November eighth, which does get us a non-student day on a general election day. You'll see the winter break, spring conferences in early March, spring break, late March, graduation on a Friday as is part of our preference, which is June ninth. This may be difficult to see or all the way through, but I would encourage members of the public or the board, both draft calendars are attached in Board Book, which would also include the explanation for those shaded days. You'll notice various colors and color coding. Those correlate to things like the conferences, the workshop days, other non-student days, et cetera. In the twenty-three, twenty-four day, very similar fall conferences with a day, a professional day on a general election. The winter break is in there. Again, both winter breaks have at least the minimum number of non-student days of seven. Spring conferences in early March, spring break does move into the second week of April. Both years, feedback from our cultural liaisons gave us an opportunity to ensure that Eid, which is a holiday celebrated by a number of our families, would become non-student days in both calendars, based on the way we were able to create those calendars. Graduation on June seventh in the 2024, spring of 2024 as well. And again, this calendar, including the coding, is in Board Book as well as a part of the process. Again, I want to thank Wendy Drugi. She was a great collaborator, collaborator and partner in this process, as well as our representatives of our bargaining units who did give feedback on multiple different drafts. So I do appreciate the time that went through in giving that feedback. Certainly, our cultural liaisons for the review and discussion, and certainly the CISA team, which is a group I should thank all the time just for having to put up with me. But thanks to them for also being a partner and having a lot of discussions through the process. And that is, or those are the two recommended draft calendars that are appearing later in Board Book during the new business portion.
Great. Thank you very much, Brian.
And that does conclude my report, if I can. There we go.
Thank you, Brian. Board members, any questions or comments?
Cheryl, it appears that you're talking, but I don't have sound unless that's just me.
Oh, I heard her. Yeah, I think that might be you, Brian.
Can you hear me now, Brian? You can, okay. Okay, awesome. All right, I see some hands up. Director Hume.
I don't have a question. Just wanted to first say thank you for, I can only imagine how complicated it is to get all of the variables in place in creating this calendar, and especially thank you for figuring out a way to, for our Muslim students to be able to celebrate Eid without having to go to school this year. I think that's really, not this year, but in the new calendar. I think that's fantastic. So thank you for figuring out a way to make that happen.
Absolutely. I think I missed the first half of that because I had to switch from one earbud to another, but I think I got the gist of that. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Hume. Director Miller?
Yeah, I'll echo. Thank you for all the work put in by all parties on this. Well done. And I'd like to just comment that I appreciate the effort to, to avoid election days. This has become a concern, I think, as unfortunately, this has become a hot day in our society. And I think it's important that our buildings as being a member, part of the community are utilized for that purpose, but I more and more feel it's necessary to have the kids out of the building on those days, and I appreciate your effort towards that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Miller. Any other comments? I concur with everything that's been said. Thank you. I really appreciate the partnership and the evolution of the development of our calendars in such a way as to really be thoughtful in addressing the needs of our families. I also particularly appreciate looking at these calendars in particular, that we've been able to whittle away those one- or two-day school weeks, which are challenging for students, families, and staff. You kind of get started only to have it shut down. So, you know, if we, if we end up with four-day weeks, that's great. And I just, you know, that's, that's a real win for everybody, I think. With that, thank you very much, Brian. Great report.
Thank you.
Next, we will turn to Stacy Solvin, Executive Director of Human Resources. We are receiving a report on the memorandum of agreement for pro pay with the Burnsville Education Association. Welcome, Stacy.
Good evening, Cheryl, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Just a quick update as to what you'll be asked to approve in our consent agenda tonight. In early November, Governor Walz issued Executive Order 2094, which encouraged districts and teachers to work together to come up with different ways to streamline or look at the workload in different areas because of the different models, the stress of the pandemic, and just the overall workload that is being felt across the state, across the nation. And shortly after issuing that guidance for the teachers and the districts to work together, the Department of Education came out in two different publications, their planning guidance for Minnesota Public Schools, as well as their TDE and QComp guided suggestions on how districts and teachers might work together, especially in the area of QComp. QComp for us locally is labeled pro pay. With that, our leader, our coordinator for our continuous improvement coaches, Katie Ness, took those, that guidance for the TDE and QComp, started meeting with folks in CISA, who developed to see what could work, what might be able to work with, with our current requirements. And what they came up with was reducing the number of peer observations for tenured teachers in their non-summitive or formative year of observations. A lot of words there. What that means is, is that our tenured teachers, two years, for two out of three years are observed by their peers, whether it's through the continuous improvement coaches or through other teachers, a part of our building leadership teams. So, and those are three observations that occur each of those years. So what we're proposing is that we go from three to two peer observations. Again, this is only for our tenured teachers in their formative years, and how that will help us is we have close to eighty leadership teachers, building leadership teachers, BLT members, as they're called for short, that those eighty teachers will not be obligated to provide an observation. So that's going to free them up because they meet with the teacher, do a pre-observation, then the observation, then a post-observation. Usually takes several hours of the prep, the write-up, and the meeting time altogether. So that's going to free up at least eighty of our teachers from having to do that part of the workload. Also, it's going to free up all of our tenured teachers that are in those cycles, the formative cycles, from having to do a pre-op, pre-observation, observation, and post-observation write-up and meeting time as well. So we feel that this is a win for reducing time. It is a part of our professional development component. That's why it falls under pro pay for our tenured teachers. But Brian has assured me that the principals will continue, as they always do, to drop in during our virtual classrooms, to provide feedback to our teachers, provide feedback without all of the paperwork and the write-ups and the time-consuming keys. Now, this does not apply to our probationary teachers. By state statute, our probationary teachers have to be observed, at least observed, observed and evaluated three times a year up to their first three years of probation. And I say up to, if somebody received tenure in another district, they only have one year probationary period. But we're not making any changes to that. They'll still be observed and evaluated three times. If a tenured teacher within the district is in their summative year, their formal evaluation year, that also is not changing for them. Okay, so they'll still have to meet with their principals, they'll do the, all of the work required for that, as well as have a peer observer through the year. This only will apply to our tenured teachers in their formative years. That's, that's pretty much the summary of the whole, what we're looking for.
The long and the short of it. Thank you, Stacy. Director Miller, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. For those that are familiar with pro pay, QComp, they know, we would know that this is a point of ongoing discussion and conversation about the most effective application of these dollars. Having said that, I want to be very clear that this MOU reflects this board's acknowledgement of the struggle that this year has, the challenges that this year has presented for all of our teachers across the organization, and we don't want to burden them with additional struggles and challenges. So this is a, you know, a temporary change in the practice. It does not reflect a long-term intent or change in the conversation to further improve upon the use of the QComp dollars. But, you know, I think this is the right thing to do. We need to get the money to the teachers, recognize the work they're doing out there to function in this non-traditional environment and move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Miller. Any other comments, questions? All right. Seeing none, thank you very much, Stacy. All right. Next, we are turning to Dr. Battle. We will receive an update about District 191's efforts to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by MDE and MDH respectively. Dr. Battle?
Thank you, Chair Alt and Directors of the Board. As Stacy Solvin mentioned in the previous presentation, we regularly receive updates from Minnesota Department of Education and Minnesota Department of Health. And tonight, I first want to start off with a very important conversation, a topic that is very important for me to share tonight, and it's about the way we can attend to self-care. So, so many are suffering from pandemic fatigue, along with regular daily stressors. And so it's really important for us to practice self-care. Social emotional health as well as mental health has been an emphasis from Minnesota Department of Health, MDE, from 191 staff, and from this board. And so I want to share a personal way I practice self-care is to be grateful for the joy in my life. I am grateful for the weeks, the gifts of the weeks we were able to have students attend our schools in person, the dedication and resourcefulness of staff, and the unity and strength of our communities. Another way I take care of myself is to get out into this wonderful Minnesota environment. So I try to walk three to four times a week. I share this to encourage you to find healthy and positive ways to deal with the stress of this pandemic. Ask for help if you need it, especially in light of the harsh realities of the impact of coronavirus. And so tonight, Bernadette Bean, our district lead licensed school nurse, and I will share that the current reality of the pandemic is not good, as reflected in the data we will share with you tonight. So with that, we will start with the latest county and 191 data, and then we'll share information regarding vaccinations. I'll also share information about targeted services and our just recently opened club, Nicolette, and Amina Oftedal and Brian Gersich will share updates regarding academics as well as activities and athletics. So to start off with the county numbers, they represent a time period, November fifteenth through twenty-eighth, and it was just released this morning from Minnesota Department of Health. Dakota County, for every hundred thousand residents, has one forty-one point five one. Scott County is one fifty-two point eight nine. This still puts us in the distance learning model for pre-K-12. Now, I'd like to show you our COVID-19 dashboard as of November twenty-eighth, 191, that you can always find on our ISD 191 website. We do update this. The last one, I think I presented, may have been the twenty-eighth. And so for December fifth, and I'm going to ask Bernie to join me in the presentation to share a little bit about these numbers, and then she will move on to vaccinations after I share a little bit information about another resource or tool that we use in our district. It's our learning model key indicators and decision processes. And so I'll ask Bernie to share a little bit about this dashboard, and then we'll pull up the learning model key indicators. So Bernie?
Thank you, Dr. Battle, Cheryl, and board members. Every week, well, since March, the nurses have been keeping track of active cases of COVID that are in our building, and also cases that were not infectious inside of our building. So we keep track of both of those numbers. We also keep track We also keep track of. Students and staff that are experiencing effects of covid, and that would mean that they are not in our building. Due to maybe they're in quarantine, maybe a family member is sick, maybe they are sick themselves. So we look at those numbers also. So we have um. A a good picture of what our staffing is like for the week coming up. Um every Sunday night I pull those numbers and I present them to Dr. Battle. And that's what gets put on the district website. You know, moving between learning models involves many conversations with community experts along with data analysis. Since March, we have navigated programming for three learning model shifts. One of the many challenges is that covid did not come with a manual. As covid continues to unveil itself. And there are advances in science, we can all agree that change is inevitable. And that the health and safety will continue to be the foundation for all covid activities for District one ninety-one. Data analysis is critical in determining next steps. The fourteen-day case rates provides an insight into the community activity. However, it is not a standalone data point. And it's necessary to monitor what is happening in our buildings. During hybrid, the health health offices traced attendance and illness for students and staff. Guidance was provided in understanding that the decision tree. And provide resource information for families. During distance learning, this process needs to continue. Planning for the return to school requires the knowledge of who can and who cannot be in our buildings. Building nurses need families and staff to continue to reach out to the health office. Whenever covid experiences are affecting their family, even when they are not in the building. This information is necessary for determining a future learning model shift. Covid can be confusing, or maybe I should say is confusing. And the guidelines continue to change. Health offices are a valuable resource for health and safety of students and staff and family. In order to understand the guidelines and navigate covid. The district's health offices are ready. We're ready to provide that distance caring to the community, community while we are doing distance learning.
Next, we'd like to share some information about data under consideration to add to. Our learning model key indicators and decision process. So we are considering adding additional criteria to look at the positivity rate within our counties. And that is this defined as the percentage of all coronavirus tests performed that are actually positive. Um but there's a threshold of five percent, and when you go above that. Um it's very concerning. Um and so Bernie Bernie can share what the latest uh positivity rates. Where I believe it was eleven in Scott and fourteen in Dakota County.
That's correct. That's my understanding, my recollection.
Thank you. And so uh we also would like to add uh possibly looking at. Uh the confirmed cases and quarantines among our childcare staff as well as students. So even though we are in a distance learning model, we are still providing childcare for tier one. Employees as mandated by Governor Walz. And so I would like to remind uh. Everyone that uh we do have a learning model with those indicators. And so if we could show and a decision process. As we move between learning models. Um so we have four categories of health, academic staffing and safety. Uh we also provide the county numbers over on the right side. Uh we use green that we believe we can um implement a safe in-person uh hybrid learning model. Any red means that um we believe that that particular data point. Um reduces uh the safety for our staff and students, and any one of the categories could trigger. That we would need to um remain in distance learning. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to Bernie. Because there has been a lot of recent informations about vaccinations and we have questions from not only our employees, but. Also parents. And so I will turn it over to uh Bernie to share some more the hot-off-the-presses information.
Yeah, and it is hot off the press, that is for sure. Okay. Um so the covid vaccine is currently in phase three of clinical studies. Today, the F D A and C D C met to seek an emergency use authorization for the Pfizer covid vaccine. Tomorrow, the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, which is known as the A C I P. Will meet and determine best practices for the administration of the vaccine and provide recommendations. On December seventeenth and eighteenth, similar meetings will occur with for the Moderna vaccine. It's estimated that shipments will arrive next week to our hospitals for administration to healthcare workers. Um the vaccine that they are planning to be shipped is the Pfizer to the hospitals because it requires an ultra cold storage. Local counties will receive shipments of the Moderna vaccine shortly after that. And they will be targeting the administration of the emergency medical systems. And the long-term resident, long-term care residents and staff. Now, the timeline for completing tier one A, which includes those groups of individuals, is uncertain. That has to be completed before they can start tier one B. And in that tier, that's where schools are listed. When it gets closer to that time, um counties will be reaching out to us to talk about what that will look like for our school district. Who um has been determined as. A higher candidate to receive that vaccine within a school system. Clinical studies and licensing through the emergency use authorization process is for adults age eighteen and older. Moderna is starting to talk about clinical studies for children ages twelve to seventeen. That will not be licensed through an emergency use. Program. It will have to go through the whole licensing process through the American Academy and the F D A approval. It is anticipated that it will probably maybe earliest will be the fall of twenty twenty-one. Before a vaccine is licensed for children. So with that said, for our community and especially our children. The public health principles will continue to be the major prevention strategy to mitigate the spread of disease. We must all continue to be vigilant in practicing the three Ws. Washing hands, wearing a mask and watching our distance. Thank you.
And so we're going to move on to some additional guidance that uh we received and now we've received clarification, and that's for targeted services. So we have opened our registration for uh Partners Achieving Learning Success pals and for Burnsville Youth Collaborative, B Y C. At registrations are due by December twenty-first and parents may complete the registration via. Our our district website. Please know we do provide additional support to those families who require language support. We have two Somali-speaking support staff and one Spanish-speaking support staff within uh the office, Jason Sellers and his staff. Um and they will help uh register families and they have started to communicate. All registration information is sent out in English, Spanish and Somali, and we also will use the district website, school messenger. Uh personal calls to homes of families of students who previously registered and had not done so by the December twenty-first deadline. We anticipate that we will have approximately a hundred and twenty total B Y C students register. Um and the number for K five students is likely to grow substantially. Um staff anticipates for pals, um we should have about three hundred students. Um I want to announce that this is the first year we are offering pals for kindergarten, first and second grade students. Earlier, uh Amina Off the Doll explained that uh we did have that assessment for um letter name fluency. For kindergarten students, and so we felt it was uh Jason Sellers' staff, uh we really felt we should offer that option. We know those students need the additional instructional support and staff have specifically recruited teachers for those grade levels. We will have sped support for students identified for that specialized support. And E L teachers who were who will be hired will support English language learners. Um just to take a moment to remind everyone about the uh criteria for qualifications. Reading, writing or math student may need additional support to meet grade level expectations. Students speaking English as a second language or who have a limited English proficiency. Students who need social emotional support, and especially in this time of covid, please, I do encourage families if you need that support to please register. Um student missing a significant number of days during the regular school year. Or a student or has a sibling who is being treated for a life-threatening illness. So the language is broad enough that we can quite literally qualify almost any students at this time due to the current pandemic. So please, parents, caregivers, apply. Wanted to give you an update that we did expand uh support for our students in sixth, seventh and eighth grade. Um during the day, um we have hours from seven A M to five thirty P M Monday through Friday and non-schools that school days. Currently, we have five students registered. Um the program coordinator is Will Ulrich. I did have a chance to go visit. Pre our distance learning and met one uh young student and asked him about it. He said he was happy to be there and liked the support. Um there are three one-hour block periods of class, one of which is a flex period for students to work on homework, electives or engage with the staff if they are caught up. Then after lunch, they have one more hour block with thirty minutes for teacher office hours or gym time with the staff. And staff have received very positive comments from the parents of those five students. Um staff also reached out to all of the teachers of those students to make sure that they keep up to date on any missing assignments or particular guided practice that those students. Uh wanted to share one example from Will Ulrich. He shared with Tom Umhofer, our director of community education. Um it took probably an hour and a half for a student to work on math. Um it took the time, but the student was so thankful and actually said that he felt more confident with that support um in math. Um so we do believe we're making a difference um for those five students. Uh we hope we will and anticipate we will get more students registered. Um because we do have a sliding fee scale for free and reduced lunch uh students. So as more of those applications come in and approve, we. Hope we can offer that sliding fee scale. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to uh Director Amina Off the Doll and Assistant Superintendent Brian Gersich, who will finish the remainder of the report.
Thank you Superintendent Battle. Uh Cheryl, members of the board, uh just to uh share with you a few updates as we've moved into full distance learning. Uh the uh elementary principals uh with the move to full distance learning uh have created a common schedule, district schedule. Um which has some commonalities for morning meeting, common times for uh a block for lunch and teacher prep. Um so that students aren't expected to be uh synchronous during that block so they can uh go get their lunches. Uh if if necessary, so there's a nice big block within there. Um and common times for grade level win, the what I need time, so that uh they can better deploy those specialists uh to uh reduce those small groups to as small as possible. Um whereas the middle and high school are going to keep their block scheduling. Uh the biggest change, however, is Wednesday with the executive governor's executive order uh asking for additional thirty minutes of prep time for each day. Um the uh district, we've decided to combine that for the elementary and for K eight into the Wednesday. And so uh the teachers all will get a block of the time, all of their thirty minutes for the prior week. Um during that Wednesday time, and so they'll have a block of prep and collaboration time um on that Wednesday and um. The focus for elementary is an extended morning meeting session, um which is really focused on social engagement and community building. Um opportunities for uh classes to uh to do school-wide events. And to do uh cross-grade level events. So you know, keeping your uh having fifth graders read to kindergartners and other types of. Of uh cross-grade events. And so um and really try to focus on student-to-student interactions so that uh we can really uh. Focus on some of that social emotional connection that students are are really missing now that they're doing full distance learning. Um and uh so that that really then students would have the rest of the day um asynchronous. And uh be able to work on um assignments or projects that they had been given previously. Um middle school students uh will engage uh synchronously on Wednesdays with their elective teachers that they've started doing that since the move to distance learning. Um so at least once a week, they'll be able to see their elective teachers uh uh synchronously. While the core teachers then will take their block of prep time and they will be using uh the rest of the day to work with CISA-directed uh curriculum development. And uh curriculum refinement. Um we have new uh standards coming out uh to be implemented in science. We have new standards. Uh to be commented on in social studies, new standards in the arts. Um and uh the E L A standards have to be fully implemented uh as of next year. And so. That curriculum work is doing, and that replaces time that we would have pulled teachers out for uh substitutes. And to be gone for a full day of instruction um at various times through the year. And so really trying to take advantage of that time and give the teachers their uh required prep time. Um. And I think that uh again, the Wednesdays uh are an opportunity to get much of that work done. High school is already providing that extra thirty minutes each day for their staff, and so they don't have a big block of time. Uh but they do have abbreviated synchronous sessions on Wednesdays and then um CISA-led curriculum development. Or uh for the um about two hours each of those Wednesdays. Um just to kind of uh know that uh assessment season is coming up. We begin the assessment season uh with uh state testing for our our English language learners. Um which begins at the in the middle of January. Um and so uh. We also will begin doing our fast bridge winter testing and uh we are currently training our teachers to administer those tests remotely. So that we can collect our reading and math data um K through eight. And uh hopefully that uh will give us uh ongoing data points that we can work with. Um we are still waiting for um guidance from the Department of Education because all state tests have to be given in person. And um if we are in full distance learning, um we'll need some guidance about how they uh would like us to move forward with that. So. Um but the M C As do take place in um April. And so if we are back in hybrid at that time, we will be able to collect that data.
Awesome. Thanks, Amina, and uh thanks Superintendent Battle, uh Chair Alt and Board of Directors. Uh related to our athletics and activities uh at the November twelfth board meeting. Uh Burnsville High School Activities Director and Assistant Principal Jay Lepper and our Athletic Director Guillaume Pack were here to talk about our dial system. And so as I kind of reference our dials a little bit, uh for those who may be confused or watching the November eleventh board meeting, there's a presentation about that that would explain. The thoroughness of our dial system, but in short, it's just a graduated system by which we would say, what are we permitting our activities to do based on uh the pandemic and covid nineteen numbers? Uh since we developed and presented that dial system to the board, Governor Walz did uh put a pause on all athletics and activities. Uh so that effectively took our dials and set them to zero. Uh even be even at uh with that in mind. Um that team that we described, we have our response team has been meeting on Thursdays when our covid nineteen numbers come out. We continue to review that and we're prepared when that becomes a local decision again to utilize that dial system as a part of how we're. We continue to review that and we're prepared when that becomes a local decision again to utilize that dial system as a part of how we're going to set that. And again, in short, that uses our county numbers, our local school district numbers, and it can also include activity by activity, sport by sport, depending on what the numbers look like within those. The Minnesota State High School League did make news recently. They came out and said that they are ready to resume activities when the governor's pause expires. Now theoretically, the governor's current pause ends next next week, Friday, the the eighteenth of December. And as a part of their preparation, the High School League did put out varied schedules based on when activities could resume. Just as that comes out and from a local perspective, what I want to make sure that our community realizes is those two Superintendent Battle, myself, we all want activities to resume for our kids as soon as possible because we know how important that is for them to be engaged in our schools and for their health and well being. But we will set those dials based on health and safety information and resume those as soon as it's safe for us to do so. And so again, with the cases like Dr. Battle had talked about earlier and some of the warnings of Bernie Bean. We're going to continue to take that seriously, and it is a team that does utilize the health and safety data in order to make that, and we'll continue to do that. I'd like to also mention that our Burnsville High School admin team keeps in very close contact with the relationships throughout the conference to collaborate, share ideas, and make sure that we're working with our conference partners as well. The final note I will make that since we presented that dial system to the board, we did expand that response team. And now we are including members of our community education or representatives from the community ed department who have also developed their own parallel dial system to make sure that as we talk about community education programs, youth sports and activities, use of our facilities. We have some parallels and we have some partnerships as we go through and really align those efforts, speaking the same language and utilizing the same things. So that team will continue to meet every Thursday. And when kind of the governor's executive orders allow us to do so, we'll start to make sure that those decisions are made and communicated out based on our localized data.
So in conclusion, I like to say that staff and I will continue to monitor data according to our learning model key indicators to determine when we may have a safe return to hybrid. On Monday, December seventeenth, the COVID nineteen leadership team will meet. We will discuss those three additional data points I would like to add. Any new guidance we are receiving from MDE and MDH because we have learned so much more since we began this work last spring. And so in my next COVID nineteen update to the board. I hope to share thoughts about any possible change in our learning model with some possible dates that we might consider. Please, I want to emphasize again that the virus dictates. It really is serious and our behavior will dictate when we can have a safe return to in person for our students. And that concludes our report for tonight. Thank you, Chair Alt, Directors.
Thank you, Dr. Battle, and thank you, presenters. Again, another thorough report. Board members, questions or comments? All right, I just want to echo Dr. Battle's comments that, you know, as as Dr. Battle and her team consider what additional data points to leverage in their decision making. And knowing, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Battle, but we need at least two periods of reductions in infection rates in order to begin to consider changing learning models. And that that really brings us out, you know, two to three weeks in advance. Our actions now make a difference three weeks from now. And that's really a concrete timeframe for us all to think about in terms of making those safe choices for ourselves and for our students to be able to eventually get back to school. So, thank you. Let's see. Next. Milk May, our student representative, want to invite you to bring your report.
Hello, board. For the past month, the College and Career Center counselors and administration at BHS have consistently worked to help guide us seniors through the college application season. Through school G updates, seniors have been reminded about the endless opportunities for scholarships such as the triple A award, the Equitable Excellence Scholarship, and the Wallen Scholarship. Additionally, there have been multiple financial aid nights, which include parent participation. There's even one being held tonight for Spanish speaking families. Lastly, the first senior class meeting was held two days ago. As seniors were able to hear about graduation day plans, cap and gown orders, senior picture submissions, and again scholarship opportunities. That is all from Mary Paul. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Milk May. Next, Dr. Battle will present the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair Alt and members of the board. Tonight, I would like to highlight something that I think our district can be very proud of. In November, we asked parents and students to share their thoughts about and experience in our schools this fall. Including info information about health and safety, distance learning and communication. And the results were overwhelmingly positive. That's not to say that means everything went perfectly or that everyone was happy in the hybrid model and or the distance learning model. But given our situation, I think we did very well. And I want to share a few numbers that indicate that success. And I have to applaud once again all of you for your clear direction and support and for my staff for their resourcefulness. Their creativity and their perseverance to provide the support that our students and families need. So more than five hundred parents and more than five hundred students participated in separate online surveys. On the parent's side, ninety nine percent said they understand the health protocols students need to follow when attending school. So I applaud our school nurses. Ninety seven percent said they felt confident that their student schools were doing what they can to keep students safe. Eighty three percent said the addition of live online video classes synchronous learning was helpful for their students. And we heard last month about how that model was successfully piloted over summer. Ninety percent of parents said they were somewhat or very satisfied with how their teacher connected with their child. It's not surprising, but good to hear that our teachers continue to prioritize relationships and connecting with students, especially in this challenging environment. What we heard from students, ninety six percent said they understand the health protocols they need to follow when attending school. And I hope they know they should be following it outside of school. Ninety one percent said they felt confident that their schools were doing what they can to keep students safe. Sixty three percent said the live online video classes synchronous learning was helpful. So we have to do a little unpacking with our students about that, and we'll have our teachers connect with them. Eighty eight percent said they were somewhat or very satisfied with how their teacher connected with it. So I mentioned earlier how I applaud our staff. I'm so very proud of our staff and their dedication and willingness to find new ways to serve our students and support each other. These numbers are wonderful to see, not because they tell me our staff is doing amazing things. I already knew that. I have continued my classroom visits virtually. But they tell me that our parents see and appreciate our staff. And that affirms my belief in our approach, and I hope will provide some much needed affirmation to our staff members too. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Board members, are there any individual reports? Nope. Okay, so we will turn to committees. We'll start with the policy.
Go ahead. I am muted too soon, nothing.
Okay. I'm starting with the Policy Review Committee. Leslie Chester is the chair of that committee.
Well, thank you, Chair Alt. Yes, the Policy Review Committee met just this past Tuesday. We reviewed two policies that we're going to be coming forward in a future board meeting. Regarding policy six thirteen graduation requirements and six sixteen school district systems accountability. And so those concludes my report. We'll see it in a future board meeting.
Great, thank you. Negotiations Committee, Darcy Schatz chairs that committee.
There is no report from the negotiations committee as it is currently inactive.
Awesome. Director Hume is the chair of the Legislative Committee.
We had a very short meeting on November the sixteenth, and our next meeting is coming up, I think the week after next, I believe. What we're talking, I think, we have meetings coming up talking about the AMSD legislative platform for next year, the MSBA platform. And we are hoping to begin to invite some of our state legislators to attend meetings so we can learn from them and they can learn from us about some of the issues that we're facing as they begin the new legislative session. So that'll be starting after probably after the first of the year.
Great. Thank you very much. Student Performance and Achievement Committee of the whole, we will receive a report in workshop in January. Amina Off the Doll had alluded to that earlier. And plan planning continues for continuing to bring those reports forward to us. Other board assignments and appointments, any other reports there?
I'm going to defer to Dr. Battle. I was unable to attend the AMSD meeting.
Okay, Dr. Battle?
Yes, the December AMSD Board of Directors meeting was held on Friday, December four. The agenda included a meet and greet with two guest speakers, Senator Elek and Johnson Stewart, District forty four, and Senator Elek Zach Duckworth from District fifty eight. We also received the Executive Director's Report, Legislative Committee Report, and we did approve the AMSD twenty twenty one legislative platform and updated position papers for compensatory revenue, early childhood education, English learner funding, facilities funding, school board renewal of an operating referendum, and special education. The last agenda item allowed members of the Board of Directors to participate in small group breakouts to review and discuss the draft session brief on the proposed constitutional amendment. The next meeting is scheduled for Friday, January eighth, twenty twenty one. With the time change for the start of the meeting, the meeting will begin at eight AM instead of seven thirty AM, and that concludes the report for AMSD.
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Battle. Other board assignments?
I do have a nine seventeen report. The nine seventeen December meeting was held Tuesday, December first remotely as we are doing this evening for our meeting. Highlights included recognition of nine seventeen employee and teacher of the quarter, Kirsten Lazaretti and Hannah Raiden, respectively. Three major business items were approved. First was the audit report for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty twenty school years or school year. Second was the approval of policies eight twenty provisions for the closing of schools whether due to weather. Six oh one school district curriculum and instruction goals and six oh three curriculum development. Last was the changing of the school board meeting start time to four thirty, beginning with the January fifth, twenty twenty one meeting through July of twenty twenty one, and that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you very much. Director Hume, I see your hand is up.
Yes, so I have a couple of updates. First, Foundation one ninety one, the December monthly meeting was held via Zoom on Tuesday, December the eighth. Like many organizations, Foundation one ninety one is struggling with how they can continue to fulfill their mission in this year of COVID. They had a trunk or treat event planned for Halloween, but unfortunately had to cancel it the week before due to the rising COVID numbers in our community. The annual in person February gala will not be happening, but the December meeting did focus on talking about some options and opportunities in the coming months to continue to raise awareness of the work of the foundation and to continue to provide scholarships for Burnsville High School seniors and to offer continued support for the teachers in our district. So the work continues even if it looks different than it has in the past. And there as always, doing just a great job of keeping things moving. And then my second update is on is for the MSBA Delegate Assembly. On Wednesday, December the second, Chair Alt and I participated via Zoom in the annual statewide delegate assembly for the Minnesota School Board Association. At the assembly, we discussed and voted on eleven legislative resolutions that had been submitted by school boards and individual school board members from across the state. The resolutions that received a majority vote will become the basis for MSBA's staff lobbying efforts on behalf of all school board members in the state in the coming legislative session. Just a couple of the highlights, one of the approved resolutions will urge the Minnesota Legislature to stabilize school district funding for one year due to the uncertainty and fluctuations of student enrollment for the twenty twenty one school year. This would allow districts to use the greater pupil count from either October first of twenty nineteen or October first of twenty twenty for the current school year. There's definitely a feeling across the state with that, that without offering some sense of financial stability, school districts are going to be unable to safely and effectively educate their students. Another resolution is urging the districts to stabilize school districts by allowing districts to use the greater free and reduced price free and reduced price lunch count for calculating compensatory revenue for fiscal year twenty twenty two. So again, a lot of the financial impacts of COVID and I know there's been a lot of push within our district recently on encouraging all families to complete the free and reduced lunch applications or meal applications. So it was a really long evening, but a very good evening. It was it was really interesting being on this four hour, four plus hour call with one hundred and fifty school board members from every corner of the state. But it was good. I enjoyed the opportunity. So I appreciated the opportunity to represent our district in place of former Director Hallweger, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Hume. Any other reports? No, all right. So we will turn to the final portion of our information session. Our farewell to Directors Dee Dee Courier and Director Schatz. And since we have two esteemed colleagues to say farewell to will plan to do that individually, so starting with Director Schatz. Of course, we do have the required bell to give to you to thank you for your your service to the school district and your dedication to all of our students. Directors, fellow board members, I'll open it up to you for comments as well.
Now this should be good. What? Nobody has anything to say? Okay, let's move on.
No, 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 no. Director Chester.
So Darcy, thank you so much for serving on the board. It's been a pleasure being joining you in our board service. And it's been an honor serving with you on our policy committee. I know you've been a humongous asset in terms of modifying and shifting our policies to be in constant improvement for our district. And I have learned a lot from you becoming in as a newer board member. And I wish you continued success and I I know for sure that we will continue to cross paths. So I wish you well and thank you.
Thank you, Director Chester.
All right, I can go next. So I echo what Leslie said. It's been great working alongside you the last couple of years and getting to know you a little bit even before you were elected, but definitely the last two years, the opportunity to serve with you. Always, I always appreciate someone who has a dry wit such as myself. So thank you for always providing that, giving us a little much needed levity at times where even if we're not talking about something that is humorous, you're often able to inject a little dose of you're often able to inject a little dose of humor, and it's very, very much appreciated. We need those laughs sometimes, and you always have good insights, and it's been, it's been a real pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. It's very kind.
All right, Darcy. Thanks for coming on with me at the same time. Thanks for everything you've been doing. I guess this is one race that I win because I'm sticking around and you're leaving, right? But I appreciate everything you've done. And I promise to still call you and text you terrible musical-based puns.
Oh, excellence. I will miss that if you don't. Thank you.
Director Courier?
Darcy, I remember when you were thinking about running for office, and, and we were at that Derby where, where they run those cars. And, and now you're, you're, you've completed your service to us. It's hard to believe that that time has gone by. So congratulations and thank you for your service to our district. Thank you.
Thank you, DeeDee.
And I'll close it out. Darcy, it has just been such an honor to serve with you. Your wit, you know, I completely agree with what everyone else has said. Your, your wit is just spot-on and exactly what we have needed, particularly in the last couple of years, especially reminding me that, you know, when asked what it's like being on the board, and I said it's manageable, and not letting me forget that I was wrong, that it's a challenge. I've appreciated your candor and your friendship and your camaraderie. And even though we won't be working together as board members, I do look forward to staying in touch and someday again having coffee together.
Yes, that's coming, coming soon. Yes, thank you. That's all very kind. I appreciate that. I will just take an opportunity to say a few words. So DeeDee's alluded to the, that when I was thinking of running, and one of the people I contacted at that time was Abigail to say, you're on the board, tell me a little bit about what the, what it's like. So I wanted to make sure, you know, I can maintain other volunteer positions, things like that. And she said, well, of course, it's what you put into it, but things run smoothly. You know, really, it's, you know, you go to the meetings, you, you know, do the work, do the reading, you know. But, but really, you know, the district runs, you know, kind of smoothly and rather quietly. And so I've taken multiple opportunities over the last four years to remind her of those words. And since taking office, we've gone through some really major changes, including three different superintendents and the COVID crisis, among others. I kept waiting for things to calm down, but if anything, they got worse. And so I can only conclude that I am the Typhoid Mary of the school board, and hopefully things will calm down now that I am off the board. But in all seriousness, this position is difficult work. It comes with great personal sacrifice of time, relationships, and family. The board members with whom I have served take their responsibilities seriously. And I can truly say this group of people are steadfastly and completely dedicated to doing what is best for our students. This has not been an easy four years in many ways, but I remember the words of my hero, Leslie Nope. After a particularly difficult Parks and Rec meeting, she commented, "When I hear yelling, I hear people caring at me loudly." This community cares very much about what happens in the district and holds us all to a high standard. We're challenged to continually evaluate our decisions so that we're providing the highest level of whole-child education geared towards each child's needs. This is one of our strengths as a district, and I am grateful for it. I am immensely proud of this district. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve. And I look forward to continued cheerleading of 191 as a civilian. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Darcy. Next, last but not least, DeeDee. Again, I want to thank you formally as Chair on behalf of the board for your years of service and dedication. You too shall receive the obligatory bell and well wishes on our, from all of us. And with that, I will open it up for board member comments.
Okay, I'm gonna go first here. I'm gonna, guys, I want to get in to be the first person to say, DeeDee, thank you, your, your leadership and guidance for those new people coming onto the board is invaluable and has always been. And I, so thank you for all that you've done. And I want to be the first person to ask whoever makes policies in the district to create a policy to officially retire the historian role so that, you know, just like we retire a team jersey, I think we should retire the historian role now that DeeDee is off the board because she's one of a kind and there is no one else like her. Thank you, DeeDee.
Yeah, I echo that completely. I'm going to, to miss the, the wealth of knowledge you have on this district that help influence us and educate us as a board on, and kind of the, even some of the histories of the buildings or how the program shifted or, or the moves or the switches, that, that has been such helpful and insightful information as we've had to face some of the decisions we've had to make as a district. And, and I also just value your kindness and your, your warmth and your consideration that you bring to your, your, you, we can tell that how much you just love the district and your investment in it from having served as a teacher, a principal, you know, on the board. It, it's been a life's journey with this district with you. And I know that I'm going to really miss having your voice and influence and input on, on, on this board. So, but I do wish you well, and I know that you'll still continue to be engaged with us. But I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can go next. Oh, do you want to go? Okay. So it's really the end of an era, DeeDee, that not only, I mean, you've been on the board for such a long time, but you were also a district employee for so many years before that. So, yeah, I, I second Darcy's suggestion that maybe we should retire the historian because you're probably never going to be replaced. I, as far as the longevity with the district from when you started to when you're leaving us. So thank you for your, your decades of contributions to the district, not just on the school board, but also prior to that. You've had a real impact. Also, I'll certainly miss your very, you're always very detailed and thorough updates from your other board responsibilities. So whoever takes those responsibilities on in the future will have a big act to follow in terms of making sure that we're all kept aware of the things that are going on. So thank you for that as well, all the work that goes into both the additional responsibilities and then reporting out on those, on those meetings. So.
Thank you.
Yes, DeeDee, I'm pretty sure that Minnesota had just become, achieved statehood when you arrived at Burnsville. Is that, no, I'm just kidding. In all honesty, you know, they, I have to say what, you know, because you do always bring the historical perspective. What, as I have reflected a little bit on that, what's most impressive for someone that has been around this district so long and all the change that this district has been through, you have always provided a comfortable connection to that historical record. But, and this is the most important thing and most respectful thing, is you have changed with that change, and you have accepted that change and grown with that change. And that is something that a considerable part of our community has struggled with over time. But you have connected to that change, and you have been able to adapt to that. And that's an amazing aspect for any human being to go through. And I, my hat off to you about it. And of course, all the time and service you put in this community will never know the amount of respect and what's due to you for what you have served for it. So thank you very, very, very much.
You are welcome.
And finally, before, I know DeeDee said you had a couple, you have a couple of words you want to share too. I just want to take a personal moment just to say thank you. I really have enjoyed our time together and have appreciated your leadership and your counsel and your friendship and the fact that you really embody that aspect of our, you know, our ethics policy, which is approaching dilemmas with an open mind. And you're very open about the fact that you have a clear opinion, and yet you listen with an open mind. And as Eric just alluded to, where change makes sense and where there's a need to adapt and evolve, you do so with grace. And, and I know that I have appreciated our, our conversations together, our coffees together. And, and I, too, much like with Darcy, will look forward to a time when, when we can get together again over coffee and, and continue to stay in touch because I just, I appreciate our, our friendship. So thank you again for your service.
Thank you. During most of my career, David Letterman and The Late Show were the most popular after-the-news late-night programs. One of his regular items each night was his Top 10 List. I have used that convention several times in my career to convey meaningful messages. And so tonight is DeeDee Courier's Top 10 List of Highlights of Her Career in ISD 191. Number 10, a Sioux Trail, Metcalf, Burnsville High School, and University of Minnesota graduate, Kamal Martin, now plays for the Green Bay Packers. And Principal Helkey and I are very pleased with that fact. And parenthetically, I called the Green Bay Packers to find out if I could use his name because data privacy, you know, I was a principal. And the, the staff there asked him, and Kamal was so excited. I was going to use his name tonight, so just know that. Number nine, Gideon Pond School, a site where I served, was not named for a small body of water. It was named for a missionary educator who translated the oral Dakota language into English. Number eight, exceptional problem-solving skills and the good old silver lining abound in 191. On April 25, 1994, an arsonist decided to set fire to Burnsville High School. In one week, the high school was rescheduled to the mornings, 6:00 to 11:00 a.m. at Sky Oaks and Niklet, and those schools held classes noon to 5:00. This event prompted the change of the mascot from the Braves to the Blades. Number seven, talk about creativity with space. 191 has fantastic experience. Examples, 15 years of a senior campus with a coffee shop resulting in not having to build a large.
DeeDee, I, I think you must have muted. Can anyone else hear DeeDee?
No, I think we lost your sound.
DeeDee?
You can hear it.
...have grace, moxie, and notoriety. In 2006, for the 50th anniversary of DHS, the Hall of Fame was born. Approximately 100 inductees now have been honored for their great work and contributions worldwide. Number five, 191, Community Education in Capital Letters. I want to emphasize how fortunate we are to have the programs such as our Senior Center and Early Childhood Family Education. The quality staff and leadership in this division of our district often seems a bit invisible. Its confidence and flexibility, though, are hallmarks of its success. Sometimes its importance gets lost in the sound effects of K-12 education. Its success is absolutely essential to the success of our levies and K-12 programs. Number four, the district has had a long commitment to respect. In fact, back in the early 1990s, we had a grant that provided programming to build respect in the district. This included a district respect policy. 25 years later, after we began adopting the MSBA model policies, I remember the meeting when we removed the respect policy per advice from our attorney. I'm still sad, but do understand the need for its removal. Number three, employees. ISD 191 has approximately 1,300, including seasonal and casual employees. Each group has an important role in the mission of our district. Of course, we know teachers are essential. But if we didn't have custodians making sure the cleaning protocols are being followed, we would have significant difficulties. And under these current challenges, our employees have been rock stars. Number two, leadership. One of my greatest joys in my 33 years in 191 has been to work with Dr. Battle. I'm going to list a few descriptors. She is knowledgeable, thorough, flexible, understanding, kind, trustworthy, insightful, open, and intelligent. As I leave this board, her capable leadership will keep moving the district forward. And number one, simply, each student, period, future-ready, period, community-strong, period. Thank you.
Thank you very much, DeeDee. I think right now might be a good time for us to take a human break. How about we plan five minutes and we'll come back in five? How about we plan five minutes and we'll come back in five. Each board member has one affirmative vote to cast for a candidate during roll call voting to select the preferred applicant. So for example, a board member who casts an affirmative roll call vote to select candidate A cannot then cast an affirmative roll call vote to select candidate B. Ms. Kenny will call the roll. And following are the two possible responses from board members. First, when a board member's name is called, that board member says "I" to cast their affirmative vote. Board members, as I said before, only have one affirmative vote to cast. The second option, when a board member's name is called, that the board member says, "I am not using my affirmative vote at this time." Should we reach a point where we have reached a majority voting affirmatively for a preferred applicant? We will then move to the appointment process. Ms. Kenny will read, after Ms. Kenny reads the results of the roll call vote and announces the preferred applicant, but a courier will read the resolution to appoint the preferred applicant. At that point, board, the board will take action via a roll call vote in which individual board members vote either "I" or "nay." Then following that, the appointee will be sworn in at our organizational meeting on Thursday, January 14th, which begins at 6:30 and will begin service immediately following swearing in. So with that, I will take nominations for first candidate, Brandon Norberg.
Chair, I would like to nominate Brandon Norberg.
We have, we have a nomination for Brandon Norberg. Thank you, Director Miller. Do I have a second? Is there a second? Hearing none, as indicated in our process, any applicant who receives a nomination with no second will be removed from consideration. Mr. Norberg is now removed from consideration. We will move next to the next applicant. Is there a nomination for Suad, Sue Said?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Suad.
Thank you, Director Chester. We have a nomination. Do we have a second?
A second.
Director, shot second. And with that, Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
What name did she say?
Courier?
I.
Shots?
I.
Chester?
I.
Hume?
I.
Miller?
I.
Alt.
I.
That is six in favor for Sued, Sue. I'm, I'm sorry, Sued, Sue, Said.
Said, yeah.
Said, sorry about that.
Thank you. No, that's fine. Thank you. All right, so we have a clear majority selecting Ms. Said as the preferred applicant. Quick Courier, would you please read the resolution?
Yes. Whereas, a vacancy exists in the office of school board member with a term expiring the first Monday in January 2023. And whereas, the vacancy has occurred after the last day to file affidavits of candidacy for the school district general election and more than two years remain in the unexpired term. And whereas, Suad, Sue Said meets the qualifications established by Minnesota law to serve as a school board member. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Independent School District Number 191, State of Minnesota, as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 123B.09 subdivision 5, Suad, Sue Said is hereby appointed to fill the vacancy and shall serve until a successor is elected and qualifies to fill the unexpired part of the term.
Thank you, Quick Courier. I will take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Schatz. Discussion. Seeing none, Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Courier?
I.
Shots?
I.
Chester?
I.
Hume?
I.
Miller?
I.
Alt.
I. And the motion carries. I am pleased to announce on behalf of the ISD 191 School Board that we have officially appointed Ms. Sue Said to fill the vacancy left upon the resignation of former Director Howiger. I'd like to thank Brandon Norberg for applying and encourage him to continue to be active in the district, look for opportunities to connect in our schools, to volunteer, to support our students. I would also like to, on behalf of my fellow board members, welcome Sue to the board. And we will look forward to swearing you in, in January. So, thank you, everyone. Next, we will, we are being asked to approve the final certification of property, property tax levy payable in 2021. I'd like to welcome Lisa Ryder back. Welcome back, Lisa.
Thank you. For the purpose of this particular agenda item, I will share my screen if that's okay. My assumption is you're seeing now the recommendation before you for the certification of final property tax levy payable 2021. We discussed this in great detail earlier today in the Truth and Taxation presentation. I would just like to make a comment that this is the certification of the final property tax levy payable. So the difference between this and what we did in September, in September, the board approved the preliminary levy at the maximum amount. Whereas, when you certify in December, then we are certifying by a dollar amount. So what you see on the screen before you now is a list of the various different categories that are listed on page 31 of 40 for the levy certification that is also attached in the board materials. And does total This amount is for the tax levy payable 2021 and represents a max, the district's maximum levy authority reflecting a point three of 1% decrease from the payable 2020 property tax levy. I would not read all of the numbers, but would instead read the recommendation that the Board of Education certify the final property tax levy for taxes payable in 2021 as follows,
Thank you, Lisa. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester, I think.
Shots.
Shots, okay. Motion by Director Schatz, second.
I'll second.
Second, Director Hume. Discussion. Seeing none, Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Courier?
I.
Hume?
I.
Miller?
I.
Shots?
I.
Alt?
I.
Chester?
I.
And the motion carries. Staying with Lisa, we are being asked to adopt a resolution establishing combined precincts.
Thank you. For this particular item, I also will pull up the resolution for purposes of being able to show just the combined polling places as listed. So, you should now be seeing those items. This is an item that is addressed on an annual basis and this is new probably in the last, I want to say, two or three years. Statue calls that by December 31st of each year, the school board must designate by resolution combined polling places. So the combined polling places that are designated in the resolution are the polling places for the following calendar year unless there is a change that is made per statute. So as you can see on the screen is a list of the various combined polling places we've identified. Edward Neil Elementary School, Gideon Pond Elementary School, Ron Elementary School, which is different from before and replaces Metcalf Middle School, Sioux Trail Elementary School, Fist of You Elementary School, Perry Bishop Elementary School and Glendale United Methodist Church. With that, I would refer back to the recommendation which reads that the board adopts a resolution establishing combined polling places for certain multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election.
Thank you, Lisa. I will take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Courier. Discussion.
I have a question.
Director Courier.
Um. Do, do all of, do we need to use all the places? Or, or are there choices in an election, Lisa, if, to use all the places? In, in an election that, let's say we have a levy election.
Right, so this, this resolution is establishing those combined polling places from what otherwise might be the case in a full-blown election.
Right.
So these would be the locations that we would need to utilize and you know, if Jamie knows differently, but that's my understanding is that these would be our polling locations. And because one of them is shifted from what it has been in the past, we will need to make notice of that to all taxpayers should we utilize these polling places in this next year.
Okay. And why even ask the question is, you know, of course nationally right now, there's, there's lots of talk about how some places handled their elections and they only had one polling place and it was, you know, 30 or 100 miles away from where there, many of their population was. And, and I know a neighboring district had a, had a levy election and only had like two polling places. And I, I want, if, if we would ever need that, I would want us to have enough polling.
if, if we would ever need that, I would want us to have enough polling places that people could, could vote. So so that, that was the purpose of my question. So.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Hume?
I.
Miller?
I.
Schatz?
I.
Alt?
I.
Chester?
I.
Courier?
I.
And the motion carries. Next, we'll welcome Amina Oftedal back. We are being asked to approve the Achievement and Integration Carryover Budget. Welcome back, Amina.
Thank you, Board Chair, Superintendent, members of the board. I am seeking approval of the 1920 Achievement Integration Carryover Budget. Due to the COVID pandemic, the Department of Education has allowed school districts to carry over any unspent funds in their achievement and integration budgets in this one-time opportunity. We have reallocated the, about sixty thousand dollars to ongoing services that we have and items that were, are already involved, are already as part of that plan. And this includes tutoring services for students and looking at expanding that beyond just the Avid program and offering some of those support services to more students.
Great. Thank you. And the recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the FY 2020 Achievement and Integration Carryover Budget. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Director Courier, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Discussion.
Actually, that was Director Schatz that made the second. Yes.
What? Okay. Seconded by Director Schatz.
I was totally willing to let her have it. So.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Miller?
I.
Schatz?
I.
Alt?
I.
Chester?
I.
Courier?
I.
Hume?
I.
And the motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll invite Brian Gersich back. We are being asked to approve the academic calendars 2022 to 23 and 2023 to 24. Welcome back, Brian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, returning after having presented the process as well as draft calendars for the 2022, 23, and 2023, 24 school years as part of the informational section. So returning with the recommendation that the Board of Education approve the 2022, 23, and 2023, 24 school calendars as presented.
Thank you. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. Discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Schatz?
I.
Alt?
I.
Chester?
I.
Courier?
I.
Hume?
I.
Miller?
I.
And the motion carries. Next, we will be adjourning to a workshop where we will be discussing FY 22 budget planning. I am declaring this regular board meeting adjourned, and we will move directly to the workshop. Erin, do we need to pause for a couple minutes for recording purposes?
No, you can move forward right away.
Right away. Okay, great. Thank you. So I will turn it over to Dr. Battle, who will be starting us off tonight. Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Chair Alt and Directors of the Board. Tonight, Lisa Ryder and I will begin the first of many conversations as we move into our fiscal year 22 budget process. Tonight, we'll share a guiding change document that you're very familiar with. It is a document we use for system-wide initiatives. It is comprised of a driving question, and so the overarching question for this fiscal 22 budget is given. ISD 191 Strategic Roadmap requires that the district optimize resources for student learning. How will the budget for fiscal year 22 continue to support our mission, priorities, balance the budget, and leverage every funding source available? There are three other sections to the guiding change: a current reality, unacceptable means, and desired results. The current reality, considering there are many unknowns for state and federal funding. We believe the items we have listed here, they will change because of those unknowns. Excuse me. So tonight, I'm really asking for your feedback about the unacceptable means, desired results. Are we missing anything? Are there any particular items that resonate with you? So either Erin and Lisa, can you pull up the guiding change, the document? Thank you. So I just want to spend a few moments going through the current reality. The team and I felt that it was really important for us to emphasize that the board has given approval for us to move forward with the pre-K-12 pathways. And the development is a multi-year plan. The board previously did receive an update from Amina Oftedal about that. Also, we have begun the exploration of an online school that is in development. And as Lisa has shared, we really wanted to capture the revenue decrease to enrollment decline. That state and federal funding is not keeping pace with program costs. She shared with that graph for the state of Minnesota how funding is not keeping pace with our inflationary costs. As Lisa has reported, the general fund balance policy requires a minimum of eight percent at each fiscal year. As of June 30th of 2020, it was reported in the audit eight point zero seven. We know there will continue to be challenges from the COVID-19 pandemic and that we will be welcoming new board members in 2021. The last update from the budget forecast, while the surplus is was more favorable, it's still at a significant deficit. And so that is a part of how, the unknowns of how our state will respond to that reality. And so with that, Chair Alt, I don't know if you want to take the section of the guiding change document, or Lisa was going to share some highlights from the budget goals, process, and timeline with the ultimate goal with the board approving the budget in June.
Why don't we just cover all the documentation and then we can have a large discussion at the end?
Okay, great. So I'll turn it over to Lisa Ryder.
Then Erin, if you might allow me to share the document, I'd like to move around it a bit. So I will now share document that I will cover. You should be seeing the FY 22 Budget Goals Process and Timeline. Yes, okay. And so as we take a look at this particular document, this gets a little bit more in detail as to exactly what it is, we're covering when. And so I'd like to point out the goals here at, at the top. As always, we're looking to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars and aligning our, to our strategic plan. We would be looking to include constituencies' perspectives and input throughout our process and be transparent, working collaboratively with one another, and submitting a balanced budget as our goals. As you get into further with the steps and the processes, you know, we, we began this document, so it's reflective of what we've been doing in October and November as well. We're now in December. I'm going to walk through the monthly activity on the second part of this document, but I do want to point out some of the notes here. So for instance, the middle and high school registrations will need to be completed to determine specific staffing areas within the larger staffing allocation. So I want you to keep note of that. And then if we go to the very last page, I'm sorry, let's go to the next page where it talks about this note regarding the Minnesota February budget forecast. It's going to be released at the very end of February, and this is the forecast that the House and the Senate will use to develop their respective budget proposals. And the governor will also issue any revisions to this budget based on the new forecast. However, at the very back of the document, you will also see some notes regarding that general state timeline per AMSD. And I want to point out the fact that the November forecast has been released. This is the forecast that the governor will use to develop his budget. And he must release his budget by January 26th of 2021. The February forecast is released at the end of February, as I just mentioned. The House and Senate will develop their respective budget targets during the month of March, but they will likely not be released until the very end of March or even early April. And you know, as history shows that this oftentimes can take either close to the end of April or early May, and in some cases, they have had to have a special session. So just to take note of that process, and it is indicated at the very back of this document. Moving back up to the second part of the document where it begins with a prep for FY 22 Timeline Actions, I'd like to walk through the monthly work that is before us in a little bit more detail. Beginning with the December timeframe here for ELT, ELT being our executive leadership team. We continue our deep-dive budget discussions, and we have had a couple, we've had a few meetings, a couple in November, as well as we continue in December and have another one coming up on the 21st. There will be a special child, special education child count that is also necessary for us, and we want to make sure that that's accurate here this month. I also want to point out that in this month, we have an operational leadership meeting, budget meeting scheduled for December 16th, and that will be our first meeting with our operational leadership, including principals and department leads. As far as the school board's action is, most of it's happening this evening with the Truth and Taxation presentation, the adoption of the levy, final levy certification, and then this workshop in itself. Moving to January, we can expect that our staff will continue to finish and revise, or finish the revised FY 21 budget for board approval, and that will come before you at the January 14th meeting. Our ELT, our executive leadership, will continue to review much of the information that's necessary for our budget discussions with principals and directors. Our enrollment projections are being completed with a preliminary summary being prepared in our budget model that is new to us. We will start work also on some of the more specific departments and fund, funds that are unique. In January, we'll also continue to hold two more operational leadership budget meetings with our principals and department leads. Those are scheduled for the 13th and 27th of January. For the school board in January, we would have the revised budget prepared for the board on the, on January 14th with their approval. And we would love to have further discussion on January 28th meeting with regard to our FY 22 budget process and forecast. In February, we would continue with another meeting with our principals and department leads on February 10th and work to prepare information for board workshops. And I also wanted to point out for board act, or I'm sorry, the schools and departments, we want to point this bullet out here, that they will hold a staff and parent community meetings presentation about rollover budgets and other individual feedback forums, and table discussions will be held with our community with an online idea and feedback forum also available for parents and community. For board action within February, it's really around a workshop for, scheduled for February 11th to review, receive, and discuss the preliminary information regarding our FY 22 budget. As we get into March, moving on down this feature, we have another meeting scheduled with our operational leadership team, principals, and department leads, with the superintendent also finalizing a list of budget adjustments during that time period and preparing for board workshops in a regular meeting to present that information to the board. The board would review the input and feedback from presentations in March as well. Then in April, we would see licensed staff notification occur, and for school board action, HR resolu, human resources resolutions would be reviewed and acted upon for all licensed folks. In May, we would finalize our line item budget, looking to get that prepared for the board, and board action would take place on all non-licensed releases. And then in June is when the Board of Education would receive the final proposed adopted budget, June 10th, with approval of the final adopted budget scheduled for June 17th agenda. And that concludes the summary of our FY 22 Budget Goals Process and Timeline.
Great. Thank you very much. Dr. Battle, did you have anything to add before we open it up?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, before I open it up, I do want to thank you and your team. This is probably the most detailed documentation leading up to budget discussions that, that we've seen, which I think will be really helpful for all three new board members just to be able to map it out. That was very thoughtful and kind. So thank you for that. Board members, so Dr. Battle and her team are looking for guidance from us. Is there anything that speaks to you particularly? Is there anything that you believe needs to be edited or added?
I'll speak for just one minute. You know, I, I think that every year, this far out on the budget cycle, there is always a fair amount of unknowns. I think more so than ever before, obviously, is we have that situation. So I inside appreciate, and Dr. Battle, appreciate your team's acknowledgement of that, keeping that forefront. You stated that in your current reality-wise on the guiding document. So, and you know, I encourage you to continue doing that because what we talked about now might not even be relevant to what we're talking about in six months, when the five-monthers budget situation. I know Lisa doesn't like to hear things like you do your best. We, you can't deal with the externalities. We'll have to take them in strides. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll go next, I guess. So I have a couple of notes that I had taken. On the first page of the FY 22 Budget Goals Process and Timeline document, there is, and Lisa, you called it out, that middle school and high school registrations will need to be completed. Was it intentional not to assign a timeframe to that? Because I wasn't sure if the asterisk was supposed to be like tied to something else in the text.
It is in the area of December. So though my assumption is that that is something that the middle and high school registration process is beginning at this time, but I would need to.
Brian Gersich may be able to add some more clarity to that.
Just wondering, just wondering if, if there's a general timeframe that, that might be added, if you believe it should be added. Go ahead.
Yep. Sorry. I know that the plan is to bring kind of the course guide to the board in January, which would kick off the process of doing the registrations for our students. So it certainly would be January and February, when we would typically see the registration happen for our, our high school and middle school. And again, that's as they're doing their course selection with electives and things and those offerings.
So then in order, so it's going to be kind of a tight window for registrations? No? In terms of, you know, aligning registrations to, you know, with the budget process? In terms of, you know, aligning registrations to, you know, with the budget process, if registrations need to be completed, um, to understand staffing needs?
Maybe I'm missing, yep.
If I may, um, the allocation for the staffing is going to be based upon the students, and then how they use, utilize that allocation by building for the staffing would be dependent upon the registrations at that point, so they would determine, um, how that works. So that's where it's important to get the part registration process rolling and such, but the allocations is going to begin to be first determined by the enrollment of students and the ratios that we have set for the various levels. And then from there, the more detailed it happens with the knowledge of the registration process being completed.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
Um, I did want to call out, um, on, it would be prep for FY twenty-two in December, just for, you know, just for clarity's sake, that, um, in addition to the newly elected board members, both, um, board applicants for the vacancy were also invited to watch tonight's meeting, so that, um, anyone who might be at the table in January will have also, um, seen this discussion and, and had a chance to digest the, the materials. Um, and I guess, um, you know, in terms of the, you know, the timeline, um, you know, Lisa, I, I, Eric, you alluded to it, that, you know, there are so many unknowns, and, you know, um, you're really good at, at bringing forward conservative recommendations based on the unknowns and, and based on the current budget forecast, which again might change, uh, we're looking again at kind of a can, um, conservative tighten situation. Um, and just thinking back, I think what, what spoke to me was, uh, particularly in the guiding change document, I appreciated the statement, um, to ensure that, um, let's see, the, talking about the, the unassigned fund balance policy of eight percent, to ensure this minimum that is anticipated, budget adjustments will be necessary any year in which a decline in enrollment is projected. That's a really thoughtful and informative statement, I think, for members of our community to understand the direct correlation in, in a slightly different way between enrollment and the budget, and then the fact that if the enrollment is declining, that's kind of our reality. So I, I, I really appreciated that statement being there. Um, beyond that, I didn't have any, any other questions. Um, so, board members, is there anything else that bubbles up for you?
I feel like what has been presented is a good start, and like, like others have said, there's, are so many uncertainties right now that hopefully, you know, even maybe by, by a month from now, things will start to become a little more clear as that budget work starts and as the legislature starts and other things. So I think it's, as I like to say this year, unprecedented, but, and, uh, everybody will be doing the best they can to get us through, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Continue to do that.
Yeah. Anyone, anything else? Any other comments? All right.
Thank you, board members, for your feedback. Mm-hmm, thank you very much. And I, I think it's really important to communication, so where, uh, the board has emphasized transparency, and so that, that continual communication as things shift and change. So thank you.
Awesome. Well, this is our final regular, um, meeting of the year. Uh, thanks to everyone for your hard work this year. Um, again, wishing our retiring board members well. Um, stay in touch, and, uh, everyone have a pleasant evening.